Okay, well, I guess if Thomas hit the record button, then surely it's time to start the meeting. So let's see. It's a virtual meeting of the Acton Select Board beginning at eight in the morning on Friday, April 12. We are all here, all five of us. So I'll call this meeting to order. And because because we're not meeting in person, Lisa didn't hand me a paper copy of the agenda. So let me just scan over here. Oh, yeah. Okay, like usual. We have a residence concern section, comments up to three minutes. It's important for us to hear from you. And is there anyone that would like to speak at this part of the meeting for resident concerns? Give a minute to see if anyone will raise their hand. It doesn't appear that anyone is raising their hand. So we will move on. Updates. Well, I don't have anything in particular. I just noting that we're in the the roller coaster time for local democracy with a special town meeting on the 17th, elections on the 30th, regular town meeting on the 6th of May. Busy time for for staff and committees and we're doing what we can. Let's see my committees. The Commission on Disabilities is 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 beginning to figure out how to how to manage agendas agendas and minutes. After the departure of Franny Osman. And we're we're it's working out. We could still use another associate member. But it's it's the 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 commission is coming together again. I think that's all I got. Is there any manager updates?
Yeah, thank you. I will be going over to the senior center after this for my monthly job with John program. And if you're not able to join and you don't want to go out because of the weather, it will be broadcast live on acting TV as well. So that starts at nine forty-five today, and we we have a special guest, which will be a surprise. You'll have to go to find out who it is. And it should be good. I look forward to speaking with folks and give them some updates. One thing I'll tell them is that in addition to the festivities that happen every year related to Patriots Day, which I think there's information about that on some other local sites, our team here is planning an Arbor Day celebration on the 26th of April. And I think this board doesn't meet again until after that. So I just wanted to mention now that will be Friday, April 26 at nine thirty AM at Narra Park. It's a collaboration with Public Works and the library and rec. And so we'll have tree planting and proceeding that will have story time and crafts and we'll give out saplings which people seem to like. So check that out.
Thanks. Any any members with stuff to report?
Dean. A report from the DPW Building Committee, the architect submittals who were received yesterday, I believe there are five submittals that have come in. So town staff and PMA, our owner's project manager will be reviewing them over the next couple of weeks. Two fifty committee last week, we had a speaker program with John Bell talking about the precursor events to the Battle of the North Bridge. Was very well attended. There were probably well in excess of 100 people in the room for that. And the two fifty committee merchandising site is up and running and we're got a little revenue starting to trickle in. So that's all good news as well. That's all for me.
Thanks so much.
How does one get to the merchandising site?
Well, it's kind of a little bit of a trip, but if you start with your on the town website, there is at least the last time I looked, there's a link there you could click on. Or you just put in Google Acton two fifty events. And you should be able to get to it that way. Most of the materials are being produced locally or at least can be picked up locally as well at up on ledge Rock Way. So it's an interesting assortment of odds and ends there for sale.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hi, Alyssa.
Good morning. I have a few announcements. The Acton Exchange, which is our local news source, launched a brand new website. It looks a lot different from the old blog format. It's very professional. And they are able now with that website to expand their offerings. So you can find obituaries and you will soon be able to find letters to the editor and its election coming up. So I encourage folks to to write to the Acton Exchange if they have anything they want to talk about with candidates or the ballot question or or anything else. I think you probably have already heard this because I failed to mention it at our last meeting during my member minute. But the Health Insurance Trust met in March and learned that in February we had a spike, a very large spike in claims again over $2 million. So they're concerned about the cash flow considering requesting the two entities, the town and the district to prepay claims. They would not ask that of employees, obviously. But just we need to keep an eye on that since we will need to continue dealing with run out claims over the next two years after we switch over to Maya. The the budget materials, which are printed slides from presentations to this board and the school committee are as well as the tax impact table and the FY twenty-four tax relief program. Those materials are available in binders and will be in the Memorial Library. They were provided for folks to look at who came to the override forum last night at the library. So if people miss that, they can watch a recording or go flip through the materials at the library. And finally, the Water Resources Advisory Committee, I wanted everyone to know that they have dove into dived into research on the stormwater utility. So they've been following Concord's process because Concord is bringing the creation of a stormwater utility to their annual town meeting. Doing some other research, industry research, as well as inviting our engineer to one of their upcoming meetings so they can they can get their questions answered. So they are making progress on that task that we assign them.
Thank you. Any other member minute? No, okay. Um, the next part of the agenda is to review the annual town meeting warrant and assign select board members to articles and consider voting recommendations. We've done most of this already. So so far, the ones that I know about that we want to look at are I'd like to talk briefly about number one, because that relates to what's going to be in the warrant and how the process is going to go for citizens' library trustee election. And then we have the 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 four articles that we haven't formed a recommendation about yet, the threes, the four, the four zoning bylaws, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and the citizens petition article sixteen. Are there other articles that people want to make sure that we discuss today?
Are the collective bargaining articles not ready?
Ah, great question.
They are not ready, and it will be a it'll be a last minute item if if they do get finalized.
Okay. Alyssa.
Did you mention the school assessment vote?
Oh, thank you. No, I'd also like to review review that again. That's number seven. Thank you. So starting at the so those if those are the ones we're going to be looking at, let me know if any others come up in your mind, but we'll start going through those. So for the citizens' library trustee election, as you know, there's one one slot open because of the ending of a one year term. And Alyssa has been working with the moderator on the the mechanics, the logistics of how that would work. And Alyssa, maybe you could review that with us.
Sure. So the moderator's plan is to have in the warrant, which I think it currently is in the warrant, a list of trustees to elect at town meeting and at town meeting. She will read the names of nominees and if there is more than one nominee, we will go to clickers. And the names will be put up on a screen. But right now, the plan is to not list any names when we print the warrant.
Yep, this the 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 steel trustees have not voted a recommendation. We do have and we do have one nomination so far. So if that's if that if that situation stays the same, that person's name, Linda Vera, would be read by the town moderator at at the meeting. Okay. And then and then someone could choose to take that item off. Let's see, is that oh, no, that's not that's not even on consent. Okay, so we would just go through that. And if someone wants to make additional nominations, that will be called for right at the at the meeting. Okay. Are there any questions or concerns about that process? Okay, great. Thank you. The next one, item seven, the regional school district assessment. Alyssa asked us to go back over this vote. And Alyssa, maybe you can describe what your situation is and what what might have changed.
Sure. So I've received advice from the State Ethics Office not to vote on any item that is related to the school because I am a school employee. So I received that advice after our previous vote. So I asked Jim if we could take that vote again. So I can recuse myself.
Okay. Then I would move that we vote a re vote a recommendation on the article seven, the Acton Boxborough Regional School District Assessment. And sorry. David has a concern and John has a concern.
Thank you. And I don't I don't know if this is a Roberts rules or whatever it is, but I thought there was a requirement that the person that made the motion has to ask to be to be reconsidered. Is that not the case? And I don't know who that person.
I'm in this matter, and I'm happy to proceed that way. So Alyssa, you have you'd like to make a request to
Wait, are we, John, is do you mean that that is whoever made the motion last time?
Maybe that maybe that's I'm misremembering, but I thought that's how it works, that the person that moved it initially would have to move to change it. Or again, may please correct me if I'm if I'm misremembering that this.
That seems like a sound process. The challenge would be remembering who who moved.
I believe that was you, Jim.
Okay, this was that's right. This is the part of the meeting where I was just making a series of motions about. Okay. So I I would I would move that we reconsider this vote. So I would. So there I am as the mover. And then then does the second or also have to agree to reconsider or?
I'll second nonetheless.
Okay. David.
Could I just say that just to make this clear that you moved to reconsider and and that that we recommend? Because I want to or do we need to reconsider first? And then that's one vote and recommend is the second vote?
I think I think two votes.
Okay. So first, we have a movement to reconsider the vote based on this new information from Alyssa. Our is and I'm I'm making that motion and Fran is seconding it. This is a roll call vote because we're virtual. So if the clerk could call the roll.
Okay. On the motion to reconsider, Mr. Snyder Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Arsenal.
I.
Ms. Nickel.
Maybe she's not participating because she wants to recuse herself.
Okay. Mr. Trotter, also I. Four with one abstention.
Okay. Okay, now now that we have agreed to reconsider, I will make a motion that we recommend Article seven, the Acton Bucksboro Regional School District Assessment.
Second.
And David is seconding. Is there any discussion before we take a roll call vote? Yeah, okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Arsenal.
I.
Mr. Trotter, nay. Ms. Nickel is abstaining, I believe.
Mm hmm. Great, that that's.
Three, one and one.
Yep. Alyssa has a point of concern.
Just one, no, not a concern. Just want to clarify that that was a recusal, not abstention. Because I am not voting. So it would be three, zero.
Three to one, yep.
Sorry, three to one.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, does that does that accord with your with your understanding of the situation here as well?
It it does. Yes.
Right, okay. Um, okay, that's number seven. Now let's move on to number ten, amend the zoning bylaw, vehicle sales rental. I would make a motion that we recommend this article.
Second.
And there's a second. There might be discussion. Seeing no particular discussion and seeing no hands raised. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Arsenal.
I.
Ms. Nickel.
Yes.
Mr. Trotter, also yes. Five, zero unanimous.
Thank you. The next one is number eleven. I would move that we recommend Article eleven to amend zoning bylaw and map Asabet River overlay district and Powder Mill zoning district.
Second.
Great. Is there any discussion? Ah. Well, David.
So I just think this is important with our the process we've been going through with Maynard, right? Cooperative process for well over a year. And so there have been lots of input on this and and I I'm you know, the I a person I like the goals in this in this overlay district and everything, I mean, including the whole corridor and including the major part, but our this is our part of the major part, our part of the whole.
Yeah, I'll add that we did get the memo from the 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 planning department noting that the planning board voted to recommend these article, this article as well. As well as the next three articles after this one. And that we delayed voting on this at our last meeting because we were waiting for the planning board's recommendations to come through. Any other discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Arsenal.
I.
Ms. Nickel.
I.
Mr. Trotter, also I. Five, zero unanimous.
Great, thank you. The next one, number twelve, I would move that we recommend Article twelve, amend zoning bylaw and map MBTA overlay district.
Second.
Great, okay, it's been moved and seconded. There might be discussion. Alyssa.
Thank you. So I am very conflicted and have been conflicted about this particular zoning article, zoning proposal. I respect that it is a select board short term goal. I I did not personally assign any points to it during our goal setting process, but it did make our number seventeen on a very long list of seventeen short term goals. I I've heard from a lot of folks that it was very important that Acton not engage in performative compliance. So not choosing parcels that were already well developed and had little chance for for redevelopment or didn't include any developable land. I I would actually be okay with that because I feel that Acton has met the intent of the legislation. If we all agree that the intent of the legislation is to increase multifamily housing in Massachusetts, because Acton has more multifamily housing than any of our comparison communities surrounding us. Thirty percent of our housing stock is multifamily. We also have a couple thousand units that at least from the most recent data that I could find, which is a few years old now that meets the income requirements of thirty percent, fifty percent, eighty percent area median income. Many of those units just don't count to our subsidized housing inventory because they're not they're not it's so early in the morning. They're not limited to income eligible. So there could be people who are living in those apartments either renting or owning, but they don't meet income eligibility requirements, and they're not deed restricted. So there's no guarantee that they won't become unaffordable. But we do have a lot of naturally affordable housing currently in Acton. Massachusetts is the third most densely populated state in the nation. It's also the third highest home value in in the nation. So so we do have a housing issue. That's that's definitely not something that I would argue against. I just have doubts that new construction is going to resolve either the supply problem or the pricing problem. And we've heard a lot from residents recently about concerns about displacement. And I think that, you know, the folks that are saying that there's no risk, I don't think that that's true. The state did recognize that the legislation created an incentive for the replacement of commercial for residential in its place. And so they changed the the guidelines and allowed communities to require commercial in in these overlay districts. So I think if we if the state recognizes that incentive to displace commercial, we we have to, if we're going to be honest, recognize that there is a risk of they replacing a large historic home on a large property with higher density newer development as well as displacing folks that are in tiny homes like capes and little duplexes along Central Street or even tenants. All of that said, I am reluctantly going to vote to to recommend this because Acton has a lot of other constraints on housing. We have limitations to not only sewer discharge capacity, but also septic discharge capacity. We have, you know, high water tables. There are a lot of onsite systems in town. There are a couple of projects that have been permitted, but have not yet been built. So Grandview was a multifamily senior housing project on Great Road that was permitted four years ago, and it hasn't begun construction. Powder Mill Place is facing infrastructure constraints with with water infrastructure in that area of town, and they haven't. So I think that there are a lot of other limitations. You know, PFAS and and any other emerging contaminants are are a limitation for building in town. So while there's no risk, I think it's very, very small. And I think the greater risk is the town losing the ability to bring in outside funding from from state grants. You know, a couple million dollars a year is is too much to risk, especially given our financial situation right now. But I'd also like to take the opportunity now to encourage us all to think about ways that we can get folks at the table who, despite the incredibly robust outreach effort, did not make it to the table. You know, we have an organization, a tenant advocacy organization that's been speaking to this board and other boards and town staff for the last couple of years and a simple email to share this information with your distribution list of however many email addresses they have, or, you know, can we come to your next meeting and present this information? So I think that we can, we can always do better with outreach and people may not show up, but at least we need to make a more concerted effort to do that.
Thank you, Alyssa. There might be comments from other board members. David.
Yes, thank you. So I I want to say first, first and foremost for this, you know, Eastern Massachusetts is probably a couple hundred thousand units short of the housing need. So I I think it's important that, you know, we 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 support increasing housing housing start starts. I think the the process has been excellent, and the plan has changed over time based on input during the during the process. I I do agree with Alyssa that, you know, going forward, there are other ways that we can do outreach and we should, you know, consider those to make make sure people are involved as as early as as possible. Most towns have supported this by far and away. Most towns have supported this, including recently Lincoln. You know, personally, I don't want to have a solution imposed upon us like the, you know, the Attorney General is suing Milton to to impose a solution. I think that's that that wouldn't be in in our best interest. I mean, it be it remains to be seen how that will come out, but I think it's that that would be a big risk. And 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 finally, I'm not not concerned about the the eviction of of people in existing units. And in fact, one of the changes made during the process was to take the Parker Street Apartments out of the the plan. And for one reason for that is they would have been a bigger risk of of replacement. So the the attempt was made in the plan to to adjust the plan to reduce that risk. Thank you.
Dean.
Yeah, I I acknowledge the the issues that Alyssa raises about, you know, the possible unintended consequences of this. But I'm going to be voting in favor of it. There is certainly a housing shortage in Eastern Massachusetts. And we see it every day with our local businesses and our local government attempting to hire employees. Because the the cost and the accessibility of housing is just out of sight for lower paid employees. And I include frankly, almost everyone that works for the town of Acton and for the school district under that category of lower paid employees. Um, now in public works anyway, we have a substantial amount of our workforce commutes in from places in Gardner. Um, it just makes them not available on an emergency situations. It's certainly a, uh, a tax we all end up paying because the salaries we pay these folks have to go up just to subsidize the cost of their commute every day. Um, so I, although there's no restriction, certainly some of the new housing is going to get built is going to be beyond the reach of, of that category of employee. But I'm hopeful that if we increase the general stock of the, uh, of housing as far as numbers go, uh, some of it will probably be fairly expensive and some of it might be more affordable. So I think from a point of view of, of workforce development, um, I think it's important that we do whatever we can to provide housing. And I think this is a good start. So I'll be voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Dean. Um, let's see, Fran?
I agree with everything that everyone has said, um, and I agree with Alyssa's, uh, point about outreach to the community and having a seat at the table. Uh, I'll be voting, we're voting to recommend this article, right? So I'll be voting to recommend, um, I think we've all heard over and over again, the housing crisis. And, um, this is the governor's way of, uh, you know, putting some pressure on to alleviate some of that, so.
Thanks, uh, this is, this has been really helpful to hear all this. Um, I agree with the points that have been made, um, me at a couple small ones. Um, the, um, I, I think I really appreciate the way the planning department, um, took the requirements of, uh, uh, of the MBT zoning act and, uh, used it to further goals that Acton has in a real, I think in a really thoughtful way. Um, uh, we'll see that a little bit more in the next article, but the way that the South Acton zoning and the MBTA zoning work together, I think is, 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 is well done. Um, in terms of the concerns about displacement, um, I, I, having talked this over with a number of people, uh, the, the, the main thing that stays with me is that in Dover Heights, for example, um, there's currently seventy-one units on that, on a three acre site. Uh, so they're really at just about the, the twenty, the twenty-five units per acre. Um, so, uh, a, a, a change that allows for building at twenty-five units per acre doesn't create an incentive to tear down a building that was already at that density, at that maximum density and replace it with something identical. Um, so for me, the, the effect of the zoning bylaw in that area is that there could be, uh, in an additional development of, uh, you know, similar density housing. Um, and I, 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 I agree that we have, we have workforce housing issues and we just generally have a housing mix issue. We just have too many in a, in a, in a proportional basis. We still have too many, um, you know, single family, large, single family homes that, um, are appropriate for a relatively narrow percentage of the people who live in Massachusetts, um, and not enough smaller units. And, uh, the ten units per acre and the, and the twenty-five units per acre in the different zones, um, create housing that's, uh, uh, you know, is, is going to be, is going to be, uh, smaller and naturally, uh, lower priced than the large, single family homes. And I think that's the right direction for, um, the, you know, the, the housing mix in Acton that we'd like to see. Um, there's always the need for more, um, housing at, you know, fifty percent of AMI and thirty percent of AMI. But what we've learned is that that requires, um, you know, a different process. That's not done by zoning. That's done by the hard work of groups like the ACHC and the AHA, um, in creating, you know, uh, subsidized housing and to, to bring together the subsidies that, that create housing at, at, at those levels. Um, and, you know, we'll continue to do that. It's still way too difficult and slow to do that, but we at least are making progress. Um, see, let me check over on the attendee list and see if there's any hands raised. No, okay. Um, if there aren't any more comments, then we can ask the clerk to call the roll. Go ahead, Dean.
Okay, Mr. Snyder Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Arsenal.
Aye.
Ms. Nickel.
Yes.
Mr. Trotter, also yes, five to zero unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. It's very, very thoughtful comments. I could see we've all been, been, you know, wrestling with the pros and cons of this one. Um, the next article that I'd like us to talk about, uh, I would move that we, uh, re, that we recommend Article, uh, thirteen, amend zoning bylaw and map South Acton Village Districts.
Second.
And there's the second. There might be comments from board members. David?
So, uh, you know, we've been trying literally for decades to revitalize South Acton and a number of things were, were done. I, I, frankly, I think that this zoning, um, helps with the most important impediment, impediment, right? I think that the, the structure of the, the, the proposed districts here, um, you know, ba- basically in other changes we had in the past, like, you know, adding sewer in the area or whatever, um, th- those weren't by themselves going to make huge changes. And I'm, we're obviously not sure that this one will either, but I think this is the, um, the strongest attempt, um, to be able to, uh, revitalize South Acton. I'm very much in favor of that.
Thanks. Um, any other comments from board members? Okay, um, oh yeah, Fran?
I just have a quick comment. I, I agree. I think this, yeah, I think this is, it goes hand in hand with the MBTA, um, proposed zoning. And I also want to make a shout out. I'm, I'm still tired, but our planning department a- a- and planning board, they get beaten up and they are implementing and getting town input. Um, and i- it's incredible, the amount of, of, uh, I can't find the right word, objections they, they face and they just keep going. And I think that's completely impressive.
Thank you, Fran. Um, uh, let's see, the most common question I've had about this, uh, about this one, uh, is people look at the map and go, wait, there's this district running up and down River Street. Um, how could there be, you know, are we going to start having, uh, you know, commercial buildings with residences on top on the riverside of River Street? Uh, that couldn't be. And what I explain is that the intent of the MBTA zoning and the South Acton Village zoning together is to, you know, cover that entire area. And this is part of the historic district, which we wanted to make sure was covered by special, um, you know, the South Acton Village, um, uh, changes, not the MBTA changes. Um, so it's, it's, it's legally, uh, would be legally in the district, but our standard, you know, wetlands protections, both the state and local protections would prevent, um, you know, uh, anyone from attempting to squeeze in, uh, you know, um, a coffee shop with a, with housing on top, uh, somewhere between River Street and the river, which is, it's all, it's, that's all, that's all within the wetlands protection area. It's not, it's not going to get, it's not going to be a sudden, uh, spate of development there. Um, any other comments from board members? Yes, Alyssa?
Um, I just want to add that I'm also sup- in support of this overlay district. I think that it brings in some elements that will help with the revitalization. Um, the parking is addressed, um, as well as the four area ratio that has been significantly lower than in West Acton Village. Um, and just adding on to the way that MBTA and South Acton Village works together. Uh, David mentioned in our previous discussion on the MBTA article that Parker had, Parker Street Apartments had been removed because of the risk of displacement there. Um, there's a lot of, uh, good synergy between these two proposals. Um, like you just mentioned, Jim, the historic district is not in the MBTA zoning. Also, South Acton Village was protected, um, that the commercial entities were protected. Um, and also further up, uh, on Central Street, some of the older historic, larger homes were left out of MBTA. Um, so sort of following up on what Fran said, there were so many changes that were made and it was a result of direct feedback from, from the community. Um, WR Grace, uh, was, was removed because of feedback from the community as well as the fair housing analysis. So I, I agree that, you know, nobody is going to be completely happy. Um, but I think that this, these two proposals, um, are the best that we possibly could have reached with all of the different objectives from people who are interested in the environment, people who are interested in the historic elements and people who are interested in, in housing production. It's a good compromise.
Um, so that's comments from all select board members. I'm looking at our attendees and I don't see any raised hands. Um, so, um, Dean, why don't you go ahead and, um, call the roll on this vote to, um, recommend Article, uh, twelve, no, sorry, Article thirteen.
Mr. Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
Ms. Nickel?
Yes.
And Mr. Trotter, also yes, five to zero unanimous in favor.
Great, thank you. Um, I believe we now have just one more, uh, article to talk about, uh, which is the citizens petition. Um, I, I had a, I have a document here about the differences between the, the, the last version of this that we got, um, brought to us by select board member David Martin and the version, uh, that was brought by citizen petition. And I'm wondering if Tom or John or David, if someone could put that on our screen. Okay, and can you like make it wider? Yeah, thank you. Um, so just briefly, this is some of the differences and I, I ran, I ran the, the differences, uh, by, um, both, uh, David and, uh, the petition writer, Paul Campus. They, they agreed that this seemed to cover the differences. Um, I, I think the, the key things, uh, not much on this page, although it is true that the select board version actually defined what leaf blowing is. Um, and the citizens petition doesn't. So, uh, I didn't think that would be a big deal because I don't think there are, have been confusions about what a leaf blower is. But this, this, that, there is that difference. Um, uh, next page. Um, I think, uh, an important difference here, uh, is that, um, that the, uh, the bylaw applies, um, the bylaw treats the town's, uh, use of handheld leaf blowers the same way it treats commercial leaf blowers. Um, whereas the version we got from the select board, uh, for the select board, uh, specifically excluded municipal employees, but then had a different, then had extra requirements for, uh, the town's use of leaf blowers. So made it, sort of made it a special case. Um, the, um, the dates, as we recall, were different. Um, basically a, a year, a year different, um, or six months different. Um, and the petition article follows some of the other, uh, leaf blower bans that we've seen in surrounding towns that start with a seasonal restriction year and then, uh, have the bans. Whereas we had, uh, you know, a si- a sort of a, a simpler, you know, first commercials and then everyone else. Um, and, um, what else? I think that was the key step on this page. Is there, is there a last page? Yeah, okay, so these are these extra municipal requirements. Um, so that, um, you know, that we would stop buying leaf blowers, um, and we would allow, we would be encouraged to create educational materials and maintain a list of contractors. Um, so I mean, I think the last two thing are things we could apply as a matter of policy if we just, if this passed, uh, and we decided these elements were important. Um, and the, the other, the big difference was the, uh, the enforcement agency. Although these became closer as, as versions, uh, continued to come forward. Um, the, uh, the, the, this, the, 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 the select board version had enforcement done by police officers or the health department. And the petition version has Department of Health or designate with assistance from the DPW and Police Department. Um, so those two versions are closer than they used to be. Uh, they both have, um, presumably based on a little bit of time spent with town council, uh, have identical language about the authority. Um, and that's really it. Um, oh no, yes, there's whole, sorry, solo page, you're right. Um, so yeah, so the fines were structured differently in the select board version. There was a, it was laid out what, what the fines would be. Um, the, the petitioner version is just up to three hundred dollars per incident and then le- leaves room for policies to be evolved afterwards, um, which would, you know, spell out the specifics. Um, certainly no one wants a situation in which, um, you know, it's entirely up to the discretion of the, you know, the person who happens to go out on an enforcement call. You, you want, you, you need and want, um, you know, specific regulations. It's just, the difference here is that the regulations would have to come after the bylaw was passed rather than be written down in the bylaw. Um, yeah, the others I think are minor technical points. Um, so with that being said, um, I, I'd like to move that we vote to recommend, um, Article sixteen. Why don't we stop sharing? Thank you. Um, and then, um, I think we could have an interesting discussion.
I'll second that motion.
Second, right, okay, thank you. Uh, comments from board members? Um, um, Alyssa?
I have a question, um, for David. David, you mentioned, um, at the meeting where we withdrew, uh, the version that you had created, that you had done some research into other towns bylaws and you had also spoken with staff. I'm wondering if you had also connected with the petitioner to, um, craft that original version that you brought to us.
So, uh, I, I think that, uh, in, in a di- I don't know who the petitioner contacted originally. I know the, that he contacted Jim, but he also contacted me many, many months before it came up at a board meeting. Um, and so I, I had email exchanges back and forth with him and in, indeed, um, uh, you know, a number of the things that were i- important in, uh, from the petitioner were included in the, in the draft, um, al- along with feedback I got from the Green Advisory Board and the Economic Development Committee and, um, and this board, um, in our discussions. Um, so, um,
So did you work, did you work in concert with, with the petitioner? Um, I think that the board had, that was our general direction was work with the petitioner. Because after, um, yours was brought to the board, Paul came back and had a list of things that he suggested we change. And I'm just wondering why that happened at a board meeting rather than in, in a discussion with you outside of the meeting.
So there, there, there wasn't very much back and forth after that process started, right? I, I used his input in the, in the beginning, um, um, but also a number of things that were important through the, with, to the petitioner, uh, directly conflicted with feedback I got from the Green Advisory Board, the EDC and this board. And so in all those cases, I, I took, or, uh, uh, I shouldn't say took, I mixed in the, the, or I shouldn't say took, I mixed in the, the uh, you know, the feedback I got from the town boards. So and so I, um, you know, I, I, I didn't do, do that. And I, I think there are some, well, you, you can finish your remarks and then I'll make my remarks.
I think Dean had some remarks. That was just a question from me to understand better what the process was.
Dean?
Yeah, I, I'll be voting against this, um, primarily because I think the implementation in the uh citizen petition is too rapid. Uh, I think even the proposal from the town side, our, our draft would have been too rapid. You have a lot of people, uh, not just business owners, but homeowners have invested in gas powered leaf blowers. They have a fairly long lifespan, especially if it's homeowner owned unit that doesn't get a whole lot of use. And frankly, the new electric ones are still considerably more expensive than the gas powered ones. And there is also uh some weight limitations as well. To have enough battery capacity in the uh, in the electric ones compared to the weight of the gasoline powered ones. So I still think that like certainly I'm frankly annoyed constantly in my neighborhood because you can hear leaf blowers start at eight o'clock in the morning and they go on until six o'clock at night. As the landscapers work their way down the street. But I still think that this is uh too fast an implementation schedule. Also, the uh, as far as the proposal to eliminate the, or stop the purchase by municipal entities of gas powered leaf blowers, I think that's ill founded when we're trying to save whatever money we can uh to pay effectively double for a unit like that. Also, I think leaf blowers, whether they be electric, gasoline, are really imperative to be owned by municipal entities. Because we have such a limited workforce and we've had very little luck um hiring new people. Years ago, when I was first working for the town, we would have to go out and hand rake the entire town common in time for April nineteenth. And you'd end up having to deploy basically the entire highway department. There'd be eight or nine people out there for a full day hand raking that common. At that point, we had not only leaves, but we also had sand from deicing operations, but it was just a huge project and hugely expensive. And I don't, I'm not convinced that moving to electrics are going to be the proper way to, to move ahead at this point uh with the development of the technology. I'll be voting no.
Thanks, Dean. Um, David?
So uh very reluctantly, I'll also be voting no. I, you know, I, I had wanted to, to support this effort. But I was, you know, in, in our, in the process that the board started, we recognized that there were a variety of opinions in town on this issue and we were trying to thread those, you know, uh, and, and try to come up with a, a thing that many people could support. I don't think that the petition uh does that. One, one of the pieces of feedback I got from the ET, EDC especially was about the uh, you know, a, a simple implementation date, th- this, the petition has cleanup periods, multiple dates, and even has this sentence that says, leaf blowers powered by four stroke engines and leaf blowers attached to tractors or mowers will be allowed on larger lots than one acre during the spring and fall cleanup periods. Now, who could possibly enforce that? Right? Uh, you know, it, it's, that's, you know, nuts to me. The fines, uh, Jim, you mentioned it, it says up to three hundred dollars. We'd have to find a way of adjudicating, you know, how the fines get done. Uh, all the feedback I got from this board from the EDC, even the Green Advisory Board, was that the law not be heavy handed, heavy handed. Three hundred dollars per instance is heavy handed. The, the one that we were developing had a warning period and said, once you got a warning, you couldn't get another you, you're kind of immune from further action for some months after that. I forget the number of months right now. And, and though, you know, the period of months, we could, we could have adjusted easily. This, this doesn't, doesn't do that. And finally, I think enforcement is messed up here, right? Our, our health department is an inspectional service. And it says, of course, that um, uh, the health department can designate someone else. But that's not the way it works, right? Our departments don't designate another department. The town manager does that and I I, I hesitate to encode in law something that is, in practice is not the way it's going to happen. And so um, I, I object to that. And very finally, that, um, I should have mentioned this on the last one with, with fines. There, there's another bylaw where that is our enforcement authority for fines. That needs to be modified. This, this doesn't do that. And so that would be another town meeting action um to do that. It, it's, it's not together enough for me and so I reluctantly will not vote to recommend.
Thanks, thanks, David. Um, Fran, thoughts?
I, in theory, believe this is the direction we should be moving in. I had, I, I think that the fines are really punitive and I think the, the whole I don't know if those could be worked out. I mean, I, I would vote to recommend just in theory of, of the health side of using gas powered blowers, but I think this needs to be reworked.
Thanks. Um, oh yeah, so Alyssa?
Um, so I, I support this. Um, I wish that uh the version that was coming from the board had had a little bit more or had um some collaboration with the petitioner. So that he didn't feel that he needed to bring his own version, um, because he wasn't directly involved in the creation of, of our version. Um, I think that the petitioner's version has enough uh open endedness and flexibility. I, I don't think that the up to three hundred dollar fine is is a, is a deal breaker because, you know, fines are in place to encourage compliance, not to collect money from, from entities. Uh, you know, the town has a lot of, of fine uh on the books for for violations of the bylaws and very rarely are, are those, are those collected. I think that there is a role here. Uh, well, it is a role of the local government or any, any level of government to protect pub- public health. And I know that a lot of folks support gas powered um lawn equipment bans because of the um emissions and the climate carbon issue. I, I support this wholeheartedly because of the, of the public health issue. And, and in terms of commercial entities, I think that, that one of the roles of, of the local government is to protect the employees that are working, whether it's, whether it's, um, you know, the owner you, using this equipment or, or migrant workers or low income workers. So I think that if there are additional changes that need to be brought to town meeting in order to to um resolve those, those conflicts, um, we can, we can do that at an, at another town meeting. Obviously, we cannot do that for this town meeting, but if there are tweaks to be made, I'd, I'd rather not send the message that, that this board does not favor addressing it in a, in a very timely manner, because this should have been addressed years ago. It's, it's not just the air pollution, but the noise pollution. And there is so much blowing that happens around town that is completely unnecessary. Um, it's, it's a way for them to fill hours in a, in a contract with, with homeowners and businesses. Sometimes they're out blowing pine needles and, and dust from, you know, mulched garden beds. And, and it just, it causes a lot of, a lot of health issues for not only the people that are using them, but everybody who lives here and works here.
Excellent. So my comments. I'm, I'm in support of the, of the petition. I, I'm comfortable with the notion that if there are adjustments that need to be made, that we can make them in a subsequent town meeting. To, to specific issues uh in terms of the, the use by the town. The town uses their leaf blowers relatively heavily, um, you know, more than a residential leaf blower. And in those cases, the much reduced operating cost of uh electrical leaf blowers will compensate for um the, you know, the additional investment relatively quickly. Um, so I think it's not a financially foolish move to have the town uh switch over. It's, it's, I'll note that it's in our, in, in the draft OSRP that we'll be talking about in a, in a few minutes. That, that there be such a switch in the town's, um, you know, operating from the gas leaf blowers over to electric. So I think it's, it's a notion that staff, at least the staff that wrote the OSRP are comfortable with. And in terms of the fines, yeah, I, I think there's two, there's two points there. One is that that after the passage of the article, regulations should be developed that would make that, make those fines not punitive. The, the three, the up to three hundred dollars will, the three hundred dollar fines would only be in the most, you know, egregious repeat situations. And that there would be, um, you know, appropriate titration of the, of, of the fines, starting with just plain old warnings. And that if there are you know, uh, adjustments need to be made to further bylaws, um, that, that would have been a issue. That would have been an issue with either version. You know, they both, both, both versions called out the general authority we have to have, have such fines. Um, but you know, we might, as, as David was mentioning, we might need to adjust the uh, the bylaw that, you know, that basically lists the fines that were, were, you know, allowed to charge. And I think that, that, that's another sort of tweak that could be done in the future. And I agree, I think it sends the right message that we're, you know, that we're in support of the increased, uh, the, the, the health effects of, of stopping these and the climate effects of stopping these uh is worth supporting, uh, even if adjustments need to be made. And that this, the, the petition version bylaw was, was, was closely matched by bylaws from other towns that have successfully, you know, gone through this process already. Guess that's it. Quickly checking attendees. Don't see any hands up. Any final comments before we uh take a vote? Uh, Dean, why don't you call the roll?
Mr. Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
Ms. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Trotter, nay. Three to two.
Thank you. We also left open the question of who would represent this article? And I think that's important because we have, we have a closely split board, so we're going to want to make sure to represent both the pro and the con um in our, in our statement. My recommendation is that, is that since I voted with the majority, that I be the person who is the contact person, but I would be, I, I, I will make sure to be you know, representing what I hear tonight about concerns uh and, and questions. And I'm wondering if it, uh, see, I, did we, were, were we doing these by votes on who was representing? Does anyone remember what process we went through before to approve?
I think we just had a come, uh, verbal consensus. There wasn't a vote.
Okay.
Let's not do that to Lisa.
Okay, so um, I guess in particular, uh, David, would you be okay with my?
Yeah, that, that, that's fine with me. I think it should be one of the three people who voted in favor.
Okay.
And you're, and you're very familiar with this issue, so.
Okay. That's, and that fits for others? I guess I'm looking for nods or something. Okay, great. We're, we'll, we'll proceed that way. Thank you. John or Tom, are there additional warrant issues that uh you want to make sure that we discuss before this thing goes to press?
Just a note that there are recommendations for articles that are placeholders and I think that was just the board trying to be efficient at the last meeting. And we can keep it that way. I just wanted you to know that it shows up as a recommendation for an article that's not not in the warrant yet. So, and if you want to change that, that's fine. If you want to keep it, that's fine too. I just wanted you to know that.
Okay, so are we particularly talking about uh item three, the budget transfer and then the two collective bargaining agreements? Okay. If, if members would prefer, I, I'd be happy to reconsider those and change them to defer and then we could decide at a meeting, you know, the, the, the usual meeting right before town meeting. Uh, or we could keep it the way it is. Do people have wishes on this? Alyssa and David?
I think that it would be wise if we deferred. Um, I don't feel comfortable having recommend on something that we haven't seen or discussed.
And David is saying the same thing. So, but now I know how to go through a re, a re, a revote of a, of a, of a recommendation, which is, let's see, if I was the original mover, uh, I would, I would uh move that we reconsider our votes on Articles three, seventeen and eighteen. There's, and then the, the seconder should, or do we need a, uh, Fran is seconding that if we need a second? Okay. Dean, could you call the roll on the question of reconsidering our votes on three, seventeen and eighteen?
Hey, on the on the vote to reconsider, uh, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
Ms. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Trotter, also yes. Unanimous.
Okay, so let's go back and reconsider these. Uh, I would move that for Article three, we uh defer a recommendation. Uh, do we do, actually, is defers, is that the default action if we don't take a vote or is it better to explicitly vote to defer? Does anyone have an opinion about?
I, I, I think that is the default action. But maybe in this case, it's confusing since we just reconsidered our vote, but I think you could do them all together if, if, if board members don't want to hold one of them.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that process, so I, I would move that we uh change our recommendation on uh Articles three, seventeen and eighteen and that it be represented in the warrant as a defer and then we can reconsider this again at a future meeting.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion on this? Okay, uh, can the clerk call the roll?
Hey. Mr. Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Arsenal?
I don't think we've heard from you yet.
Sorry, I froze for a minute there.
Okay.
Ms. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Trotter, also yes. Unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so those will be re-reflected as defer in the, in the next draft um and printed that way. Mr. Manager, any other warrant related stuff that you want to make sure we discuss? No, I'm seeing a shaking of the head. Okay, good. Okay, that means I'm going to go back to my agenda. The next item number four is called approved recommended plan for the Main Street Sewer Extension Project. Mr. Manager, can you take us through the changes in the last, all the, the news in the last few days and what the recommendation is?
Yes, thank you. So this project is the sewer extension that would take Yes, thank you. So this project is the uh sewer extension that would take sewer under Route two and connected to the new McManus Manor. Uh, forty-one units of housing that the Housing Authority is developing uh this year. Uh, we received the Mass Works grant to do this connection. Unfortunately, when we opened bids in March, the bids were much higher than the funding that we had available. And so we uh have been working on ways to uh address that issue. I think we talked to the Housing Authority. The plan that they have. The they had intended to connect to sewer, uh, it simplifies things for them. Uh, from a construction standpoint, to just tie into a pipe rather than having to build a whole septic system. It also uh avoids some issues that uh we would have with site work related to other projects that are happening on on the properties adjacent. And so it's, in addition to being a good project to begin with, it has a lot of. Uh, good benefits if we can continue to to move this forward. So we talked to our state delegation, we talked to uh. Executive Office of Economic Development, who have been very supportive uh to us. Throughout the process, uh, giving us extensions, et cetera. And uh, at this point, our course of action is uh we're going to rebid the project. Uh, we do not have the funding and we need to make a decision on the bid by like tomorrow, and so we're not going to know tomorrow whether we have the funding or not. So the best course of action is to do some value engineering, rebid the project. Uh, we'll be able to have the bids returned before the Housing Authority has to make final decisions on their. Um, big project, uh, because they're out to the uh construction market, are now trying to get their general contractor. Um, so we can line it up so that we'll get bids back in mid or till mid to late May. Have an answer on whether it's within our budget or not. And uh, make the decision in about a month. But what I'm asking the board. Uh, for support, where I'm asking the board to support here this morning is that. I believe that even if we go out to bid, it's likely that it's going to exceed the funding that we have. Um, I I hope it doesn't. I hope that the value engineering that we did, uh, Bruce is a project enough to get us in within our appropriation, but. I believe there's going to be a need to continue pursuing an amendment to our Mass Works grant. Uh, in general, when we're asking the state to pitch in more money to a project. A local match goes a long way in in helping them decide whether it's a good investment of their limited resources. And so uh what I'm asking the board to consider this morning is. Reallocating um one hundred seventy-five thousand of ARPA. As a grant match from other sewer sewer related projects in town that um have not. Uh, progressed the way that they did when they're in uh first laid out. The two that I'm referring to. Are a private system um that supports Nagog Park. Uh, they received the ARPA allocation to do a three hundred thousand dollar project, they changed the scope and it turned into a eighty thousand dollar project, which is goo- good news. Um, they had requested using balance for something else. So something the board needs to decide. And then the other sewer related project is the board had allocated five hundred thousand to uh support investment in the South Acton wastewater system. By uh increasing capacity and other things. Uh, we've determined that the best use of that funding is actually a change in scope, which focuses more on I and I work. And more on uh additional feasibility study rather than what we had intended to be. Half a million dollars worth of design to to build a new rib, which which is not feasible. So in the end, there are two sewer related projects that are going to return funding. And I'm asking the board right now, not a not officially, but to say that it's interested in committing. At least one hundred and seventy-five thousand of ARPA as a grant match if we need it um next month. To be able to keep this project alive, because because if we don't have a match and. The bids come in and we still need a supplement from Mass Works. And we say, we just, we just need the more more money, can you help us? They may say, I'm sorry, if there's no match, we we can't make it work. And I don't know that, but I have a feeling that that might be the case.
Thanks, John. Um, uh, just, I'm I'm assuming that there's going to be some questions here because we've just heard a lot of numbers. Uh, and the the facts have changed quickly. Um, but just to be clear, after we get our questions answered, it looks like what you're looking for is. Uh, a sense that the board supports uh having a match for uh the. Extension project and that that then that match funding would come from. Uh, ARPA funds to be reallocated in a more formal vote at a future time. Is that, am I getting that right?
Yes.
Okay, so questions or comments from board members? Uh, David?
Yeah, uh, thank you, John, for, you know, thinking through this creatively and, you know, coming up with a potential solution here. Um, can you, uh, I, there may not be these numbers yet, but I was just curious if you have a a sense of. Uh, how much um of the one seventy-five would come from each of the two sewer projects? Um, or do you not have a sense of that yet?
Well, the revised scope that we have in mind for the South Acton wastewater system project frees up exactly one hundred seventy-five thousand. Uh, and and the board may decide that it it doesn't want to do that, so I I. So generally, that's where that one seventy-five comes from, but if the board also wants to reconsider the the Nagog uh investment. Some of it could be used from there, but we could avoid using that if if that's the board's desire.
Great, and that's and that those details could be settled later, but it is helpful to understand the amounts. And the options. Um, David, did you have a follow up?
No, thank you.
Great. Um, did I start seeing Fran's hand?
I I just wanted to add that I'd be in favor of this. I think that a lot of time and effort. Um, has been put in by, you know, the Housing Authority waiting, uh, the dog park waiting. Um. So I was curious. If we did uh reallocate money, eh, does that? In the future, there might be other money to go toward these projects. I- is that? Something maybe through grants or. Something, some some other money. Don't we have money?
So, I I think, I think the only, the only funding that we. You know, we don't have ca- general fund money, we don't have capital funding. The only funding that we have. That is anyway going to be ever possible for projects that need support is ARPA. And the board had a really well thought out plan that you that you invested seven million dollars. I reported at the last meeting that we've spent about half of that, and the rest of it's allocated to projects in progress. As with, as with many projects, some of them will change. And there'll be funding that will need to be reallocated. There are projects that need more support. That I'll be planning to bring to you, the childcare subsidy program needs another injection to to. To uh maintain that for another a half a year. Uh, a few of the park projects could use some extra support. Um, so there will, there will be decisions that need to be made uh before December thirty-first, which is when we have to have all the money under contract. And as I said before, we're not going to leave a di- a penny of that on the table, so we're going to reallocate every last penny uh of that. Uh, with with the board's support, and so it's a process that we're starting now. Uh, we'll continue to finish projects and we'll continue to realize that some may be freed up. I mentioned last time the COVID response funding, which I believe we allocated. Um. Twenty or fifty thousand, that that is not something that we have a need for right now. Um, and I think that's something that can be reallocated to another of these initiatives that. Uh, the board supports. It's just something that I'm asked, I'm going to ask you to do when we have the full picture. Which is why asking you to commit now to one hundred and seventy-five thousand, I thought it would be a little bit neater to have it. From an existing sewer project, so it doesn't change things in a way that are too too much different um from some of the other options that you'll need to explore. Next month or.
And there's a chance that we'll be in the same position uh at the, you know. End of May, right? So. Where when the are, you know, when the bid, if we get a bid. We could be in the same position, so.
If we open bids and it comes in exactly under budget, then we don't need to ask Mass Works for anything and we don't need to manage.
Right, okay.
But if it comes in higher, we're going to have to try to figure this out.
I I just would love to see this project as projected go, you know, go along.
Um, other comments or questions? Um, Dean?
Yeah, I'm I'm very much in favor of uh John's proposal on this. I think when we do come to the point of deciding which of the two pockets we're going to take the money out of, I. I would be inclined to take it out of the the proposed failed project in South Acton. I think there's a lot to be said in favor of uh. Of helping out Nagog Woods along, not generally in favor of taxpayer subsidies to private entities, but. I think since uh. It doesn't look like we're going to be getting uh municipal sewers anywhere along Route two A anytime in my lifespan. Uh, this, this is probably a nice way to uh to try to extend the life of their project, so. But that's a decision for another day, but I I strongly recommend that we uh we follow along John's recommendation.
Thank you, Dean. Um, Alyssa?
Thanks, um, so I absolutely support, um. Allowing Nagog to use the leftover funding to replace the pump. I definitely support. Additional I and I work, that's really important to the operation of the the current existing system. Um, I, this is a tiny amount compared to the, you know, twenty-four million dollar, twenty-five million dollar price tag of McManus Manor that's subsidized. Um, heavily, I just want to point out that the town already has um contributed a great deal of money. Um, from community preservation allocation, from the Acton Community Housing Corporation, from. ARPA, from waived sewer privilege fees, um, also the purchase of the land, um, which we got a little bit back from. From CPA funding so that the acting housing authority could pay the town a million dollars. It was more, much more than a million dollars. Um, so we've, we've already uh contributed, we've already matched um a couple million dollars and then some lost, you know, revenue. And I I also was not, I wasn't on the board, but I wasn't in favor of adding this parcel to the sewer district. Because one-third of the parcels that are in the sewer district have not yet hooked up yet, and we are limited in our. Allowed discharge capacity by the state, so, you know, adding even these forty, forty-one units um takes away capacity from. From people who were in the in the. Um, existing sewer district before this was was added, so it. It limits um their options ten, twenty, thirty years from now, so. So even though it's a small amount, I'm not in favor of of um. Adding any more money. Uh, the septic that was already designed is a is an option for the Housing Authority project. I know that it does not um allow for the design of the dog park that proponents would like to see. The more attractive um design, the the slightly larger amount of space for the dog park. Um, but I just, for all of the reasons that I just mentioned, I can't um vote to support that.
Um, thanks, everyone. Um, I'll I'll add this comment that, um. Um. I I think this is a, I think this is a wise middle ground uh. In uh support for the possibility of, you know, allowing the the Plan A for um uh. The Housing Authority and the uh and the dog park. Um, but I I'm. I think that it's, it's carefully phrased in the sense that we're not, we're not saying we want this to work at any cost. Um, we're not saying that, um, you know, that we want to spend. More than this. Um, we may end up being willing to spend more than this, but I I I I sense that we're, we're approaching that point where. Uh, spending more is is uh is not what the board is interested in. Um, so, but I I think it's fine to proceed with the, with committing the the, you know, the one seventy-five as a match, uh, and that it comes from ARPA funding. Um, if if necessary, uh, after the rebid. Um, I'd see at least one comment from the public. Um. Can someone let Acton Dog Park Committee have their three minutes? Okay, you should be able to, it looks like you should be able to speak now.
All right, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tom Gillespie, current Chair of the Acton Dog Park Committee. Thank you so much for working this issue. Just a quick question in terms of um exploring the possibilities if. The matching grant, uh, or I'm sorry, if if the town match for the additional request to Mass Works goes through and. The bid comes back with a li- a little bit closer, and we basically feel we can, um, you know, uh, close the gap with that. Uh, John or Tom, do you have any rough sense of how long it takes Mass Works to sort of. Come back and agree on any increase in the allocation, given the match and everything else? Are we looking at hopefully a a a a few weeks, s- small number of months, or is that going to be a protracted uh time?
So we would, we'll need to have a decision uh by the end of May, uh, for the Housing Authority to keep on its schedule, so that would be the goal.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Great, um, seeing seeing no more comments from the public. Um, it seems like we want to put a motion on the table, which is. Uh, to a, uh, to approve the potential allocation of up to one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. From previously allocated ARPA funding as a potential match on a Mass Works grant. Um, for the South Acton, for the sewer extension over over to. Is that, am I saying this in a way that's useful, John?
Yes, um, move to a point, move to approve next steps for sewer extension project, which includes rebaying the project, seeking additional grant funds and committing approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand from ARPA reallocations as a match for Mass Works funding. If the amended requesting additional funding is approved.
That's exactly what I meant to say. Let's let's say that I said that. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Fran's a second. Um, any more select board comments? Dean, why don't you call the roll?
Yeah, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
Ms. Nickel?
I will abstain.
And Mr. Chowder, also yes.
Okay. You go, go off, go off to the senior center.
All right, thank you. I gotta run.
Yeah. Um, okay, and we have one more item that we can cover ourselves with Tom's assistance potentially. Um, and uh here I am. Finding the agenda again. Okay, um, discuss letter of review for twenty twenty-four, twenty thirty-one Open Space and Recreation Plan. And Alyssa and I had some uh text and email exchanges about this, so Alyssa, maybe you can review what 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 we're up to today.
Yes, thank you. So, um, uh, it was decided at our last meeting that I would draft the Select Board Letter of Review. Um, based on prior letters, our discussion, and then we would uh vote to approve that letter. With any changes that are suggested when we discuss it on April twenty-ninth. So today, um, because we've all had the draft of the updated Open Space and Recreation Plan. Uh, we wanted to make sure that you have a chance. Um, however many pages you've read at this point, um, because it's over two hundred pages long. Um, to provide some some feedback to assist me in drafting that letter. Is that, does that cover everything, Jim?
Um, yeah, so to summarize what we need to do, there might be comments we want to make out loud at this meeting about the um. About the OSRP that would be reflected in the uh in the letter of review. Um, and that after that, uh, there would be a, uh, after that, our next opportunity would be at the meeting of the twenty-ninth. Um, to to suggest changes to the draft that we want to avoid. Uh, uh, you know, exchanging ideas between now and the twenty-ninth, so we continue to do this in in open session. Um, and uh, I guess the only, the only thing I would add is that, you know, if there are like, you know, um. You know, e- e- editing, you know, copy editing. And kind of things, this could go directly to 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 the planning department, they don't need to uh go through. go through a formal review process with the with the rest of the board. So that having said, were there were there comments that people wanted to make sure were reflected in the review? Okay, I'll add a couple. Most, I I sent a note to Nora in the in the planning department, but almost all my comments were were just, you know, copy editing and, you know, like misplaced diagrams and little, you know, little little text editing things. The only thing that seemed to be of substance was there were times in the OSRP where they led up to, I thought, reasonable places to mention the town's work on MBTA zoning. And and I wonder if it would be wise to add something in the OSRP about how the town is, you know, working to fulfill its obligations. And so that was, that was the only thing I came up with, and it could be that people have thoughts about that, or we could just let it sit out there and you know, see what happens with it. Alyssa?
So I I can't recall exactly where it is in the plan, but it is mentioned.
Oh, great.
That 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 the town is working towards that. Of course, by the time it gets printed, it could be that that's old news.
Yeah, it'll have to be artfully phrased, because yeah, it won't have the latest facts. Okay, yeah, I'll 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 double check that before I, I'll double check that. I just saw, I saw a reference to forty B development, and I didn't see the the MBTA zoning. Alyssa?
So I have a couple of comments that I think if anybody, you know, disagrees that this is general consensus of the board's view before I write it in the draft. One thing that I noticed relative to prior iterations is that climate change, you know, increased flooding, that is prominently outlined in this in this OSRP, as well as there's more emphasis on groundwater and surface water protection. So that was something that I see as as new, and I was going to make note of that unless there are objections to that.
Yeah, I noted the same. I appreciated it, and I think it's a great idea to call it out in our letter of review. Other other review comments from board members? Nope, okay, and I don't see any hands raised in the public. So Alyssa, I think you're on the hook now for okay, so we'll get a, we'll get a draft review letter before a meeting on the twenty-ninth. It'll show up in our packets like you. Thanks, everyone. Back to our agenda, we have a couple of consent items. So say say hold if you want to step more discussion on either of these, or read them. Number six, approved special farmer's market winery license to sell applications. Bliss Point Meadery, Acton Bucks, where a farmer's market, June sixteenth through October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, from ten AM to one PM. And number seven, appoint Patina Abe as a full member from Associate Member to the Open Space Committee with a current term to end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Move to approve consent items six and seven?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Arsenal? Ms. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Chowder also yes.
Right. And any any meeting evaluation comments? I I again, I continue to appreciate that we can have votes of to disagree without being disagreeable. I thought people were were stating their opinions in a way that was very, very respectful and and listening well to each other. Any other thoughts? I I don't like virtual meetings as much as in-person meetings. But I appreciate that I didn't have to be there at eight in the morning.
My, I thought the meeting was so riveting, I didn't leave for a second cup of coffee.
You can do that now.
I move, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Let's call the roll on that one.
Mr. Grant, Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
Ms. Nickel?
Aye.
Ms. Chowder also aye. We're adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
See you around.
Happy Friday.
Yeah.